What their concerns or issues are, whether they support it, deny it, and why? And following that, we will close a public hearing and will deliberate. And we will vote either to approve, deny, possibly post, we'll table it, possibly we'll modify what the request was. And as we're going through this process, we are guided by what's in our municipal code. We, we can't legislate, we have to look at what the ordinances are and what, what they allow us to do and what they allow the applicant to do, and that's how we'll use that information to base our decision. We don't legislate, we just interpret what's in the municipal code. So with that, are there any conflicts or ex parte contacts that need to be disclosed?
I have one, Mr. Chairman, I live down the street from the applicant.
Okay.
Justin, might I suggest, if I'm tracking here, you'll sit out for this go around. But then maybe you and I could trade places at the end of this first item, that would actually help me out, so.
Sure.
Great.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Just, I'm curious, how many outside attendees are there tonight? Because I, I don't, I can't see that from my view.
I see right now thirteen. And Mr. Price stated that there are thirty-three residents. I don't know if they're all with him in a room or what, I asked him, but I didn't get any reply.
Okay, I was just curious, thank you.
We certainly have thirteen or fourteen people on the, in the audience.
Thank you.
So with that, let's move to the first item, unfinished business, minor conditional use. Two thousand and one, a minor conditional use permit for vacation rental at one thirty-five Palisade Circle, Todd Nagel applicant.
Certainly, so this application was postponed at the April meeting. And it is for a request to operate a short-term vacation rental. The property is a single dwelling unit. It has four bedrooms, two and a half baths, in approximately two thousand four hundred and fifty-four square feet. The floor plan provided shows five bedrooms. Staff did confirm there's an unfinished area that the applicant intends to finish into a fifth bedroom at some point, but at this point, we're just looking at four bedrooms. There's a two-car attached garage and driveway that accesses the property. It's a low-density residential. That district requires a minimum lot size for a single unit of eight thousand seven hundred square feet, and the subject property is over ten thousand five hundred square feet. And it is a whole, single-platted lot, there aren't any additional units proposed, and no physical changes to the property in regard to this application. The applicant recently purchased the property, and he and his family reside in the home. The applicant proposes rental of one bedroom to guests when the family's in residence, and the entire house when the family is away on vacation, basically during the summer. The initial proposal didn't specify periods during the year the owners would be renting the entire home. And there was some back and forth prior to the April meeting, and then some additional clarification that the applicant provided for this meeting, that's all provided in your packet. Some of it summarized in the staff report, and then also his amendment email is attached to the packet. I'm not going to go through all of that information, it's, it's available, and you all have had it, it's been posted. So the minor conditional use permits need to meet the following criteria. So number one, surrounding neighborhood, that the value and qualities of the neighborhood surrounding the conditional use are not substantially injured, and item A under that talks about the Manitou Springs design guidelines. This property isn't in the local historic preservation district, and therefore isn't subject to the guidelines. And that the proposed use is compatible in function and design with surrounding land uses. Surrounding properties are single-unit residential with many owner-occupied and some rented to long-term occupants. There are no vacation rentals within the five-hundred-foot separation distance. There are a number of vacation rentals, I think it may be on the order of maybe five or so in the Crystal Hills neighborhood overall. Parking, the applicant has clarified, one off-street parking space will be utilized by guests when the family's in residence, and then up to four spaces, two in the garage and two in the driveway, would be available for guests during any approved periods in the summer that the family wouldn't be in, in the home, and for which rental of up to eight guests is proposed. So staff's provided a chart that shows basically what the requirements are, both during the, for parking during, when the family's in residence. You know, the, the code requirement for a single-family residential home is two spaces. It doesn't necessarily take into account how many bedrooms or how many people reside. And then in regard to a number of guests and required parking, one bedroom for up to two guests would be one parking space. So the required total parking would be three off-street, and proposal, proposed and provided is four. Then when the residents wouldn't be at home, obviously, they wouldn't be generating any parking. The guests, if there were up to eight guests, which would be two persons in each of the four bedrooms, that would generate a requirement for up to four off-street spaces, and four off-street spaces could be provided. And the site plan does indicate between the garage and the driveway that there is adequate space for those four spaces. So staff does believe the function and design and use of the property as a vacation rental with guests and parking capacity at the maximum proposed for a portion of the summer months can be compatible with other properties and uses in the surrounding area, and not have a significantly greater impact than residential use. Item two is intent of the zoning code. You have the purpose and general intent statements out of the code. Staff believes the proposal can be consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning code. The area is primarily single-family residential with owner-occupied and some rental units. The applicant will remain in residence with limited periods during the summer, that the family will be away, and the full home would be offered at that point to guests. The original application also proposed that should the family decide to move from this property, that they be allowed to convert to full-time vacation rental, non-owner-occupied vacation rental use. That was something that is, you know, not certain, may, you know, they may move, they may never move. It's not on the, on the immediate horizon. And that's generally something that the planning commission and certainly planning staff does not recommend, that we approve things that may or may not happen at some future point. We don't know what the codes are going to be a few years from now. We don't know, you know, whether that use would even happen. We don't know whether the conditions that that kind of proposal might be approved under would still be in place at some, you know, future point, several years down the road. And so it's, staff really has not considered that in this report. The recommendation is that he would need to, if that was an eventuality and was proposed at a later date, there would need to be another application for that. So with the owners and residents for the majority of the year, the number of guests on a consistent basis would only be two persons with one vehicle. Issues that would disturb neighbors and would likely arise are usually are in the evening. So the owner being on-site would be able to respond to issues such as that in a timely manner. The application notes, the owners will manage the operation. They do have, whether they're in residence or not, they do have their daughter as a backup for management periods when they might be on vacation. The application, the application indicates a minimum two-night stay. I believe the applicant is offering to change that to a three-night stay minimum, but that's something that he will discuss with the commission. That kind of information isn't mandatory in our code, but can certainly be used when you're considering things like traffic impacts and, and, and that type of thing. So the application was signed by the owner. The signed and notarized compliance statement was provided. The ownership is per the assessor's website. The site plan provided has a North Arrow. The applicant did provide a list of owners adjacent to the application. The property's own low-density residential, and properties for quite a ways are zoned that same designation. So trying to illustrate that on a map gets you pretty, pretty far out there. So that, we're just, you know, at this point, we just have the written notice that, that what the, what the zoning is. The, as I mentioned, they did submit a map section that shows that they are eligible to apply. You can see from that map section that there's a small green sliver of a circle that comes close to the property, and that is showing the distance separation from another approved vacation rental. So they are just outside that five-hundred-foot separation requirement. The floor plan of the home's interior is provided. As I mentioned, they have provided some parking information. Staff notes, a standard parking space is nine by eighteen, and therefore both the garage and the driveway appear to be adequate to hold two vehicles each. Staff asked about allowing guest RVs, and the applicant confirmed they will not market to vacation rental guests with RVs as they felt like that would probably be a concern for the neighbors, and, and not, not something they wanted to, to get into. The applicant, in regard to management, we've noted that the applicant lives on the property and would manage the vacation rental, and proposes that during times that here his wife are unavailable, they have their daughter perform management duties. An evaluation of the request against the goals and actions in Plan Manitou is as noted. It talks about tourism impact on housing in neighborhoods. The city has not yet reached the maximum number of vacation rentals per the zoning code, although there have been more applications that would probably meet or even exceed the limit. Not all approved properties have chosen to operate, and some properties have operated and then decided to close. And actually, we've had some long-term vacation rentals that, a couple of them that have recently closed down. So it's, it's a fluid number, but we have not yet, we, we don't seem to get much closer than the current forty-nine that we're at. In regard to item number four on page five, conditional uses should not be allowed where such would create a nuisance, traffic congestion, threat, threat to public health, safety or welfare of the community, or violation of any provisions of the design guidelines, the city code, state law, rule or regulation. Staff understands there is some concern and opposition to this use overall. And whether, frankly, whether it's adjacent to someone or not, there are some neighbors that are concerned with the impacts from this type of use. Manitou Springs has not experienced significant issues with vacation rental operations as a rule. I mean, I can't say that there haven't been some long-ago isolated instances, but nothing that I'm aware of, of any seriousness in more recent years. We did check, the, the police department said that they're probably their most, their most recent types of contacts have been people, guests that have locked themselves out, and they come in, you know, late at night, early in the morning, and, and they, they've left their key or, or lost their key. And so the commission has been asking vacation rental operators to either put a digital touchpad or one of those key lock boxes so that guests cannot have to try to get help in the middle of the night. So, you know, basically oversight is the key to compatibility. Living on the property is one way to assure guests are interacted with and monitored, and issues are stopped before becoming problems. Although we do have, probably the majority of our vacation rentals do not have owner occupation. They are managed off-site. Good management, whether it's on or off-site, is key. And the applicant is an experienced vacation rental operator, and has provided a letter from a neighbor adjacent to his other property in Colorado Springs, indicating he's responsible and responsive. The vacation rental conditions and standards, as I noted, we're about at forty-nine approved vacation rentals. And right now, we stand at availability, we can go up to fifty-nine. The vacation rental must be occupied by renters for a minimum of twenty-one days per year, and the application specifically addresses that requirement. Individual rooms in a dwelling unit can't be available for rent unless the owner of the property resides. Well, since he's just proposing when they're in residence to rent one bedroom, then having different people from different guest parties wouldn't be feasible. And when the owners are not on-site, then they could only have one guest party made up to, up to eight persons, not eight individual or four individual different guest parties. In regard to fire extinguishers and carbon monoxide and, and smoke detectors, the floor plan does need to be revised to show the location of fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, and CO2 detectors on each level of the home. That was noted by the fire department. The application does state that no smoking will be allowed on the property, and guest pets will also not be accommodated, which is something that has come up in some previous applications. Occupancy of the vacation rental wouldn't, should not proceed, exceed building capacity. For a house this size, up to eight people is nowhere near their capacity in regard to fire capacity or fire code. You know, two people per bedroom is, is, results in a capacity that would be considerably under the occupancy limits. Standard quiet hours between ten PM and seven AM would be observed, and the application acknowledges adherence with that code requirement. Item G is regard to the clearly visible and legible posted notice within the unit, and it has specific requirements regarding evacuation and emergency route and that type of thing. As is pretty usual, the posted notice will need to be provided to the planning department to confirm compliance. Staff recommends a map be added showing an evacuation route in the case of wildfire or flood on Fountain Creek slash Manitou Avenue. That can impact exiting from this neighborhood, so it's good to, to let people know that, you know, you may be fine way up here on top of the hill, but if you need to try and get out of town and there's a flood event going on, you may not be able to, to use Manitou Avenue, you may have to bide your time. Item H, the owner or manager shall ensure the occupants and/or guests of the vacation rental do not create unreasonable noise or disturbance, disengage in disorderly conduct, et cetera. The posted notice should include information regarding disturbance and unreasonable noise. Again, with the applicant on-site during the majority of the year, that can be directly monitored for noise and other issues. When on vacation or not in residence, the applicant's daughter is proposed as a backup management. And I don't know whether she's going to be present tonight, but he can certainly talk more about that. Item I, vacation rental shall be separated by a minimum five-hundred-foot radius. So as we noted above, there's no issue with the separation distance to other vacation rental properties. This is just outside the five-hundred-foot separation of the closest other approved vacation rental. The owner must provide the city with updated contact information. Complete contact information, which includes names, phone numbers, emails and addresses for everyone involved in the management of vacation rental, will need to be provided for both the planning department file and on the business license. That information must be kept current and updated as necessary, as that's where the police department or code enforcement would generally look for emergency contact information. Given neighbor concern, staff would recommend that an annual notice providing contact information for the vacation rental management be provided to the residents surrounding this property in the immediate neighborhood. This will help ensure that if there should be any issues, neighbors can not only contact the city's code enforcement or police department, but also know how to get hold of the managers of this property at any point of the day or night. The request has been advertised and the property posted per the city's code requirements. The applicant submitted information regarding the mailed notification to the surrounding property owners and the proof of mailing receipts. There have been several neighbors who have contacted the planning department concerned with allowing a vacation rental at all with the parking and potential number of guests. That was under the original proposal. At the time of this writing, staff had not received any further updated comments, and wasn't sure whether or not, with the changes that, and the clarification that the applicant made, whether or not that resolved a lot of, of those issues. We've, in the last couple of days, received a number, I think it's somewhere in thirty, thirty-three, petitions, emails, notification, notifications that there are a number of properties and, and residents that oppose this application. And certainly, I think there's a number of them that are available, or they've logged on so that they can comment tonight. There haven't been any adverse comments received from reviewing agencies, so there's no issues with water or sewer utilities or anything like that. So staff does find the application can substantially address and meet the requirements outlined in the municipal code regarding regulation of short-term vacation rentals and the criteria for minor conditional use permits. I know it's, it's difficult when there's this much public opposition, but from, you know, from staff standpoint, I could not find that this proposal was really substantially different either from, you know, what's proposed as far as the operation overall and in relation to other vacation rentals in the area that have received approval. Some of them, some of them with, with some substantial opposition. So I, I did not determine that there was, was a difference between this application and those others. That may be something that planning commission determines. You know, certainly, that's why there's seven of you here, and, and you know, one of me, and why we don't make the final decision. But staff is recommending approval of My Cup Two Thousand and One for operation of a short-term vacation rental at one thirty-five Palisade with the conditions, one, the vacation rental shall accommodate no more than two guests in one bedroom rented when the owners are in residence in the home. Two, for a period of no greater than eight weeks annually, which will generally be during the summer months of June, July and August. During periods of time when the two owners will be, when the owners will be away from the residence, the entire home may be rented for up to eight guests in four bedrooms. Guest parking, when the owners are in residence, shall be no more than one passenger vehicle. When the owners are away and the full home is rented, the maximum number of guest vehicles shall be four passenger vehicles. All required guest parking spaces must be provided on-site in the existing garage and/or paved driveway. The vacation rental guests must be instructed they are not allowed to park on-street. Four, excuse me, no guest RVs will be accommodated. Five, all advertisements and/or listings for the vacation rental must contain the approval number, which is My Cup Two Thousand and One, and copies of advertisements and/or listings must be submitted to the planning department for retention in the property file. The advertisements and postings shall provide information on parking restrictions regarding the number and types of vehicles. Full manager, both full-time and backup, information to include names, location address, phone numbers and email contacts shall be provided for the planning department file and on the business license. Any change to the backup manager shall be provided to the planning department for review and approval and immediately updated on the business license. Seven, a notice to the neighborhood properties surrounding the vacation rental shall be mailed to those property owners and tenants, providing current management contact information in the event of any issues. A copy of this annual notice will be provided at the time of business license renewal. Eight, a final guest notice complying with eighteen point eight nine point oh four oh G, number one through seven, must be submitted to the planning department for review and approval prior to issuance of a city business license. The notice must include information regarding no smoking on the property, and that guest pets will not be accommodated. Nine, in a conspicuous location for the guests, the owner must post emergency evacuation procedures for wildfire and flooding. Staff recommends a map showing an evacuation route be added to the posted notice, and guests also made aware of the potential for flooding on Manitou Avenue. Ten, at least during any period that the owners are not going to be residing in the home, a digital lock box containing a key to the home shall be provided on a door accessible by vacation rental guests. Alternatively, the applicant can choose to install a coded door lock that will be available to all guests year-round. Eleven, the owner must obtain a business license from the city of Manitou Springs and the required tax licensing prior to listing the property for vacation rental operation. Twelve, this approval does not allow for transition to full-time vacation rental of the home. Should the applicant and his family vacate the home or sell the home to someone that does not plan to reside on the property but wants to operate the entire home as a vacation rental for more than eight weeks per year, a revised vacation rental application shall be required under the applicable city codes in place at the time. And that's the staff report. Available to answer questions.
Hey, are there any questions for staff?
I have a question.
Sure.
So when we're saying on this, your summary, that we're approving up to eight weeks over the summer for a period of no greater than eight weeks annually, well, generally during the summer months of June, July, is, is there any oversight for that?
It'd be the same oversight as any of the vacation rental operations, or even their owner-occupied. So are you talking about, is there any oversight to make sure that they don't rent for twelve weeks?
Yes.
We can check their websites and their calendars to ensure that they are not making reservations that would exceed that. You know, I, I'm not going to say that that's a hundred percent foolproof, because it's not. It's hard to, it's hard to know, you know, if you're making a reservation, I guess we would know from the number of people accommodated in that reservation.
Well, I guess, I guess my question is, if you're, you're, you're going to the trouble to spell out, we're going to say not more than eight weeks. But if you don't have a process to monitor that, why is it even there?
Sure. I mean, we can, we can monitor as good as we can, we can ask the applicant to provide that information. You know, we would hope that the applicant, most times people are pretty, you know, pretty honest about stuff. But we can, you know, we could talk to our enforcement, our website, vacation rental post-compliance, the enforcement.
Yeah.
People that we have, and see if they could, if they could monitor that during the summer.
Yeah, I, I guess my, my point is, I, if we were putting that as a kind of a condition, then if we don't actually have a process in the way that we're going to monitor it, you know, it's, it's not very useful, and then, and then the neighbors become the police, you know, which you don't want.
No, no, I mean, you don't want that.
Maybe I'm just not tracking here, but.
Excuse me, we can't all speak at once. How about, from now on, raise your hand if you want to speak, and I'll recognize you. First of all, I think, you know, we can, when we get to the deliberation part of this, we can slug out what we want to put here for this condition. I think to do too much debate right now, we're getting. I think to do too much debate right now, we're getting off, we have a lot of distance to go, but. Tip, you had your hand up, did you want to speak?
It was really on issue, should I wait till later on?
I think so, yeah, yeah, because we're just, this is the proposal and. Unless you need more clarification, I'm just saying that to try to craft. Solutions for proposal right now is probably.
Well, this isn't about crafting, it's just that I was wondering, Michelle, would that information be in the taxes, they have to pay taxes, would that be in the tax record?
It's probably something that could be sussed out from the tax records, but that would be after the fact.
Right. Yeah, okay.
Okay, are there any other questions? Mike?
I I don't think that the audience should be able to. Make comments on the chat whenever they want, does it make sense to turn that off? Are you done seeing those?
I see them, I'm ignoring them, I can't, I'm, it's hard for me to focus on two things at once.
I don't know if we can turn it off.
If I may.
Yes.
Typically, what you would do is just hide that and these comments, because of the way they're being made. We're not generally considering those to be a part of the public record. Rather, when someone is called on to speak. And they speak and they let you know their name and their address, at that time, we would take that into consideration. But I do understand. The comments are, can be distracting and and people may think that that's becoming part of the public record and it's not necessarily the case.
Okay.
I am looking for a way to to possibly disable that to ensure that that isn't a confusing matter, but that they may still be there.
Yeah, okay, we can, you know, just ignore them or. Not look at them, but. Are there any more questions for staff before we bring the applicant in here? Okay, can we? Add the applicant here to. Get their take now.
Okay, I think I brought Mr. Nagel over, if you could unmute your mic.
There you go.
Okay. Would you like to state your case, Mr. Nagel?
Sure, thank you, and thanks, Ms. Anthony, for. Your presentation there and support. So my name's Todd Nagel, I own the property at one thirty-five Palisade Circle. I have been a Manitou resident for eleven of the last fourteen years. We own another property in Manitou Springs and another property in Colorado Springs at this time that we do use as a vacation rental. We have been personally experiencing or using vacation rentals for a number of years. Most of the time, my experience has been, well, all the time, my experience has been. Family vacations to different parts of the Colorado or the country and have been able to have good experiences with that. As the, as it relates to this particular application. Well, I guess I won't jump into that, they, you know, I am. In business here in Colorado or in Manitou Springs as a Realtor, I've been a volunteer here in the community for. Number of years, I love Manitou, don't want to live anywhere else and certainly have a. Vested interest in the community and the neighborhood. That's my opinion, but that's how I feel about it. We are applying for this application. Everything that you have presented from in the packet there. I wanted to add a couple of small things, some safeguards that we would be doing. To protect our home and our neighborhood, we we feel it would be beneficial to the neighborhood as well. One, when we bring residents in, we do mandate a security deposit. Number two, we would be installing in addition. Either a ring type of doorbell or a camera. We can monitor how many people are actually coming in to use the property. And then additionally, you know, as they did, we don't require or we don't. Allow smoking and we. Write in our, you know, description, we would also indicate that this is not a place to party and not a party house, we. Yeah, we paid a fair amount of money for this property and have absolutely zero interest in anybody else. Destroying it or causing harm to the property and or to the neighborhood. Our feelings or our thoughts, maybe not feelings, our thoughts are that. I've got a list here that seems as though they're currently. STR, according to the website, the Manitou Springs. Website, there are short-term rental permits in Crystal Hills located. At four sixty-one Crystal Hills, three twelve Clark's Lee, two oh four Crystal Hills, one seventy-one Clark's Lee, thirty-eight Sandra. Twelve Sandra, one Loretta and one fifty-three Clark's Lee. I believe that our, that that. Establishes certainly a precedence for. Properties in Crystal Hills to be utilized as a short-term rental. In addition to that, you know, I do feel that, you know, as a Realtor and as a property owner. That there are certain. Property rights, one of which being control of a property as long as it doesn't. Supersede or step on. The policies of the local governance, we have the right to control our property. You know. Oh, there was a question that was brought up about. Monitoring the weeks, I I do understand that is a, you know. Whether there's a mechanism in place, I don't know, it seems to me as though the host compliance mechanism ought to be. Able to do that, additionally, my wife is a teacher, that's part of how we kind of like, she'll be teaching and then we would be. Not traveling during that. Non-summertime, so that's mostly why we came up with how or with the application that we came up with frankly. Because we'd like to do some traveling during that summertime when she's not teaching. I think, oh, yeah, I went through those. Yep, my, certainly my hope would be that. The commission would approve and more so, my hope would be that in six months or a year. That the neighbors who are concerned, which I understand. Would not have any, that there would be no material. Negative impact on the community or on our neighborhood. That's, that's our kind of how we're approaching this, that would be my hope, my my expectation frankly. As having done this before and continuing to do it. But that's kind of where we are coming from. Our experiences as a vacation rental. You know, owner and manager is that. Number one, Manitou Springs is very much a tourist destination, period. Many of our, our shops, you know, rely on tourism, you know, sixty-five percent of their income often. A year comes from tourists or tourism. That's a great deal of what feeds the Manitou Springs. Government through those taxes and offering a residence. For people to use and utilize, we just think is is reasonable for this neighborhood and for this property. We have experienced guests from other parts of the country, most often. Come in to visit either family or coming for, you know, tourism, not for. We've never actually literally ever experienced somebody using our other property as a party house. And nor do we would expect that that would be an issue at this property. That's pretty much all I had.
Are there any questions for the applicant, if you have a question, just raise your hand and I'll recognize you. Mike?
Hey, Todd, this is Mike Casey, I'm just curious about Amanda, your property manager, does she live at the house?
She does currently, Mike, I'm. My wife and I are actually the primary property managers and then when we would be, you know, we would all be vacationing or whatever, then. She would be available if she likely wouldn't be with us, but that would also be at a point in time, she's not likely to be living here. She's now, she's in college, we've got two college students right now that are here with us that. Most likely won't be long term, but will be in the area.
So where do you expect her to be in the summer? Just in.
I I don't know.
Okay.
I I mean, I, you know, at school or at her place of residence outside of this property.
Okay, and how many vehicles do you guys own? Is a family?
As a family?
Yes.
Does that include my son in Las Vegas?
I don't know. How many, how many vehicles park at Palisade Circle on a regular basis?
At this moment, five. One for each, I've got my wife and I and three children in that property.
Okay, so then if you were to vacate over the summer, then all of those vehicles would have to leave?
Yes, that's correct. It'd be zero.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, Mr. Nagel, if we have more questions, we'll bring you back.
I thought Julia had a question.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to confirm with the applicant that there were no issues with the staff's recommendations that the. The applicant agrees with those recommendations.
I do agree with those, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I do agree with those recommendations and I'm glad you. You asked that because I do apologize, I did. Intend to, I mean, you can do what you want, but I would, we would. Increase the minimum stay to three day or three nights essentially if that was beneficial. I think that it can be beneficial maybe for the community members around or the neighborhood members around, but I, you know. I would still be fine with, you know, two or three night minimum.
Okay.
Thanks.
More questions from the commission? Okay, thanks, we'll get back to you if we have more questions.
Okay.
Okay, now the public hearing is open, if anybody, we have plenty attendees, if anybody would like to speak, I guess there's a raise your hand. Option.
Okay, so what I'll do now, if that's all right, is I'll watch for the attendees, I see the first one and what I'll do is. Mr. Chairman, if you'll recognize them and I will. Select them to allow to talk and if you choose to set them in a certain period of time, like for a minute or thirty seconds or two minutes. Just indicate that and I can.
Yes, I'd like.
Limit the comments to three minutes.
Okay.
Looking to speak.
Okay, I'll have a timer here and I'll go that route, so, okay. If anyone would like to speak, if you could signal that you would like to raise your hand. I will pull you over. Okay. I see Scott Priest, would you like me to go ahead and allow him to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Priest. You're muted.
Okay, we unmute him, let's see.
To do it.
Yeah, he has to do it, I've unmuted him, but he's not speaking.
Can you hear now?
Yes, yes, good.
Okay. Hey, hi, thank you for all you being here, the question is for Michelle.
Excuse me for a minute, before you start speaking, would you state your name and address for the record?
Okay, my name is Hong Yu Price and one, two, three Palace A Soko. And a twenty-seven years proud homeowner on Palace A Soko. And my question is to Michelle. And Michelle, you, it sounds like you're very experienced of your love work. During your working experience, how many approving process that you have thirty-three neighbors opposed the application?
Um, it's not something that's that's totally.
That's not, yes or no?
Oh, yeah, we've had more than than thirty-three at times, yeah, I mean, it's not a frequent occurrence.
Yes, one street, I'm not talking about the whole neighborhood, you know, one street.
You know, I can't recall. When there's been a single property.
Second question. For the zoning code is to promote the safety. The health for the neighborhood. Our Palace A Soko. Is the neighborhood has been traditional peaceful. For decades. Hardly even have any long-term rentals in our street. So you, you just seems like yesterday you sent out to everybody, you proved this recommended already. And and this is the first that despite of the chaos of what's going on in the world everywhere. Luckily, fortunately, that we're very lucky in Palace A Soko for those years. To have the peace such a good time. But now, you know, Colorado is such a cold state, summertime, such a very short summertime is the only time. That all the neighbors came out the street, all the children is playing out in the street riding bicycles. So this is the time that you are open up our street to the incoming visitors.
I'm, I'm just going to quickly interrupt, I don't want to take any more of the other people's time. The coronavirus is a really serious issue here, I know that Airbnb's. Guidelines and.
Who is speaking?
I believe that was Ms.
Mr. Priest.
Mr. Priest.
Okay, we just know who's speaking so we can get it on the record.
I'm Scott, and we just wanted to voice the opinion, there's a lot of unknowns. When somebody unknown comes on the street, like the influx of all the marijuana cars that come up to party. We never had anybody coming on this street in all these years until that happened. And now with up to six or eight cars and children riding bicycle. We just don't want to have to go back to the city council or to the city and say, we told you so, now there's a tragedy. So anyway, it's just the wrong place to do something, especially when thirty-three residents all on the same spot, same block. Say please, no, and just to reach out to the owner. And just to reach out to the owner, before you bought the home, I would have done the application and found out an approval unless you knew.
You need to make your comments to the commission. We're not, we don't speak between applicants, audience. It's just strictly you speak to the commission. That's our our standard.
I'm sorry, my husband's leaving, not here anymore. So the last question I just want.
You've exceeded your three minutes, so briefly wrap up if you could.
We're at four and a half minutes.
Just last question for all of your panel. If you were among us, if you or us, if it's your neighborhood, what will you do? Are you going to work for, work for the people, by people? Or you're just going to work against the people? Thank you.
Excuse me, I will just answer that in, you know, just a general way. We all have faced this in our neighborhoods. And we, as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, we can't make the laws. We interpret what's in our municipal code. And our municipal code has mandated that this use is allowed under certain circumstances. What we can do is we can add conditions to make it more palatable. But that's, that's the extent of what we can do. And just a note of process as we go through this, whatever council, whatever our commission approves. If you're not happy with it, you can appeal to city council. That's, that's the next step. But right now we are, we are guided by what's in our municipal code. That's how we have to operate. We can't just sit here and say, yeah, you know, we have a law, but we don't like it, so we're going to ignore it. That's just not our, our charter. We don't have the ability to change the law. So with that, we have a McCall is the next person.
McCall, I'll go ahead and allow that person to speak. And just as a reminder, if you could please state your name and your address.
I believe you're muted right now. You need to unmute. Okay. Looks like you're unmuted now. You can speak. Okay, well, let's. Because we don't hear anything. Do we want to go on to Julia Bouton? And we can always come back to Nicole.
We can do that. All right, Julia. You're muted. Please unmute your mic.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, perfect.
Okay, thank you very much for getting to me here. I understand I, my name is Julia Bouton and I live on, at 139 Palisades. I understand I'm not able to ask Mr. Nagel a question directly, so I will ask the council this. Mr. Nagel mentioned that his other vacation rental has not been, it has not, he's not had any problems with being a party house. Not sure that his other vacation rental is actually walking distance to a recreational marijuana store. Now, however, his current property at 135 is actually walking distance to the recreational marijuana store at the bottom of our hill. So my question for the council is, is there anything in his application about drug use? Will drug use be allowed at his house? Obviously, there's no smoking, but we all know drug use takes many different forms. So that is my question. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And at the end, we'll ask, I'll keep a track of these questions from Mr. Nagel and we'll ask him. Okay, next, now we have Steve Fassold.
Steve. All right, Steve, go ahead. Be sure to unmute your mic.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, perfect.
Yeah, Steve Fassold, 138 Palisades Circle. Yes, my question to, to the committee here is, is if I understood you right, you are only able to look at the application based on the city code. And so as long as it passes muster there, it appears to me that it really doesn't matter what the residents think. Am I right?
We, yeah, we can't, it's not like a popular in contest where if, you know, we can, we can deny someone a use that's in our municipal code without some finding that it, it would be. It would not be appropriate. And, and it's, you know, we've tried this before. We are pretty much constrained. You know, just for example, imagine if there was a vacant lot on your street and somebody wanted to build a single-family residence. And, you know, people in neighborhood all unanimously wanted to keep that lot open because it's where kids play baseball and so on. Even if we had an animus consent of the neighborhood, we would not be allowed to deny people the use of their property. And in this situation, we have the same consideration we have to make, which is, what is our municipal code say? And, and we have to, we have to be informed by that. And in the past, there have been times where we've overreached, where we've tried to deny an applicant. And I'm not saying necessarily we who are currently on the commission, but it has happened in the past where we've, we've denied an applicant the use of their property because we thought we had legitimate justification for that. And, and we were either overturned by our city council or, or farther up the chain, you know, up to district court. We've actually had cases where we've been overruled. So that's really the parameters we have to deal with. We can look at conditions, we can add conditions to make it more palatable at times, but that, that's the extent of our reach.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. I understand that our animus is, is not at you guys, but it really at Mr. Nagel and his, and really not being very considerate of his, his neighbors. So I understand.
Thank you. Next, with their hand up is McCall again.
Let's go ahead and try that. Be sure to unmute your mic.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Kristi McCall and I reside at 116 Palisades Circle with my husband Ronald McCall. We have owned our property for 16 years. I am the parent of one of the small children that plays on Palisades Circle. I would like to point out a couple of things. First of all, I understand tourism is a major driver of the economy of Manito Springs. However, within one mile of our home are three major hotels and many smaller ones that provide plenty of accommodation for our visitors to our community without bringing them into our residential area. Moreover, I find that Palisades Circle has become the bearer of the brunt of the marijuana shop that's at the end of Crystal Hills Boulevard. I have observed, I live on the corner where Palisades Circle drops down into a cul-de-sac. And regularly in the summer, my husband and I sit here and shake our head as we watch car after car after car stop and proceed zip down the, they, they get turned around at the bottom. They miss the entrance to the marijuana shop. They proceed up the hill and we're the first bailout. We have two blind corners on our street. The northern blind corner has literally nine small children, elementary age, that play in their yards and in the street. People then zip down our cul-de-sac and back up infuriated, of course, because now they've gotten turned around and lost and on the way to the pot shop. Now, our Emerald Fields has been a fantastic neighbor and I'm not critical of them. However, I think there needs to be, at the very least, if this is approved, there needs to be some remedial measures taken such as ample speed limit signs, children at play, no outlet signs, local residents only, speed bumps or something to address the fact that people speeding on a street that is meant to be a circle. It is not like Crystal Hills Boulevard. It is not like Clark's Lee. It has blind curves in it and it has a number of small children playing in it. And approval of this would be really inconsistent with my intent and my hopes and goals as I age in the community and raise my child here to have a business being run down the street for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that is, all of that have raised their hand. Oh, there is another one, Ray and Melinda Pruitt.
Yes.
Okay, I'll go ahead and allow them unmute their mics.
Okay, hi, Ray and Melinda Pruitt. We live at 134 Palisades Circle. First, a question probably for Michelle. The eight weeks for year for full-time rental, how does that reflect to the, when the in-residents, two persons, they, can they do that year round when, if they're in residence?
Yeah, if they didn't go, say they didn't go on vacation, then they would just be able to use the, the one room with the, you know, up to two guests.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. Yeah. So if they didn't, like I said, if they didn't vacate to where they could have the larger number of guests, then under this, they would be able just to continue that, you know, one room to two people.
Okay, but, but for a full-time vacation rental service for eight, up to eight people, that's limited to two months a year or eight weeks a year?
That's under my conditions, which I, the applicant has indicated are acceptable. They would not be able to do more than eight weeks a year.
Okay. Yeah, real good. And I would say, and I, and I heard Mr. Nagel mentioned the three-night minimum, which I think is a much better idea. I'm not crazy about this whole thing. I talked at length with, with Todd yesterday. And he knows how we feel about it, but I think three nights preferably would be much better than the two-night. It would do, it would go a little bit toward lessening the traffic on the, on the circle. My wife Melinda has a comment.
Hi, this is Melinda Pruitt. I'm at 134 Palisades Circle. And I just have a question about the whole procedure of posting that this event is going to happen, that people are applying for short-term rental use to notify all the neighbors, to send all the mail. What is the purpose of that when it doesn't, it honestly doesn't matter? Doesn't matter what we think when we're notified. I mean, there's so many people that are not happy with this. And I'm not infuriated by it or anything, but I don't understand the process of, of all the input, all the hoops that he had to jump through when there's, when there's no recourse for people that oppose it.
Who wants to take that? Do you want me to take that? It's, it's up to you, Michelle.
We, we understand the process. It's just frustrating and that it's seemingly don't have a voice. Mr. Fassold just addressed this thing. And I think now we all understand, maybe if I, if I understood Mr. Delwich earlier, we do have a recourse to, to follow this up with city council and, but yeah, everyone here, everyone on the circle is extremely frustrated that we seemingly don't have a voice. And so that, you know, we would like to convince, or we would like for you guys to vote and say, all these people don't want it, so let's deny it. We, I guess we realize now from what Mr. Delwich said earlier, that's not in your, in your power. So thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tip, you had a, were your hand raised?
I was just, I really appreciate the question from Ms. Pruitt. And I guess that one of the reasons, Ms. Pruitt, that we go through this every month is that if you could have, let's just imagine that the planning staff had said it's okay for them to have 20 cars, 20 cars for their guests at a time. And then we could, and then if the neighbor said, well, 20 cars, that goes against the, the regulate, the stipulated number that are permitted in a certain kind of use, then that would be a really good reason to take a, take a certain kind of action about that. Because the, there are all sorts of, there's, there's language in the code that protects the residents and the neighborhoods in different ways. And we're really attentive to that. And oftentimes applicants are looking for certain kinds of variances against what's in the code. And we have to make determinations on that basis. So I appreciate the frustration, but that's the kind of thing that we have to be, we have to be looking out for. And as the chairman was saying, when, if you, depending on what happens now, if the neighborhood chose to appeal to the city council, the city council has a broader purview. And, and so I've been in these, I've been on your side in your place before with neighborhood actions. And one of the good things that happens, I think, when you talk with your neighbors is that you muster your arguments and you figure out how you make, you want it, you want to make a case and then you do it every chance that you can. And that's just, you know, that's all part. So looking at the whole process, I think is really important there.
Well, and if I could just quickly, you know, I think it's important that people know what's going on in their neighborhood. So this, the public notification and everything is, is partly for people to be aware. But we do want you to participate. And it's not like participation does nothing. You can affect change to the application, to any approval. If there was, say, a circumstance that you all knew about, that the neighbors knew about, but wasn't apparent in the application and staff and the commission weren't aware of it, that you brought to light, then some, you know, that that could make a difference as far as the suitability of the property. I think where we have problems is denying something solely based on other residents not liking it. And, and you know, that's just, it's not something that is comfortable or that we like. Nobody likes to have to tell people, sorry. But sometimes that's just the way, you know, it works. And, but it doesn't mean that you're not, your input isn't valued and you can't affect the approval and that, you know, we want to hear the input. And I think it's important.
Okay, thanks. We have another person who'd like to speak, Jess. He disappeared, I guess.
I'm sure that she's there. Jess had to be promoted to a panelist using a different version of Zoom, so.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I just want to also.
Start by stating your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jess Wilson. I live at 130 Palisades Circle. And I would just like to also say that I would prefer the three-night minimum for the application. And then also a question for Michelle. Are you guys only voting on the, the eight weeks? And then the rest of the year? And you're not voting on that temporary thing that you were talking about?
Um, so the conditions under, in the staff report, the recommended conditions specify when they're in residence, it's one room, up to two people. And then if they're out of residence during the summer months, up to eight weeks, they can do up to eight people with four vehicles. But it does not allow for a transition to full-time, you know, complete use of the house vacation rental. Say if they moved out, that, that would have to be under a separate application.
Okay, thank you. That was what I wanted clarified.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Okay, I don't see anybody else with their hands raised. So before we close a public hearing, I'll just briefly, I'd like to ask Todd Nagel a question based on one of the people who spoke. Could we? Are you there, Todd? Todd?
Can you hear me?
Yes, okay. Someone asked the question like, what is your policy on drugs? Will you have a policy of no, no drugs in the house or? No drugs in the house, or will you allow them, or, you know? That was just the question that one of our neighbors asked, so I'd like to have your, your thoughts on that.
Sure, I appreciate them bringing up that question. I didn't specifically address that in part because it kind of wasn't addressed in the framework of the application and I just didn't. Uh, didn't want to complicate it. I am personally, we, we do not allow drugs. Um, at our, at our other property in addition to the non-smoking. Um, so that is definitely something that, you know, can be put as a condition, or we are very willing to. And agree with wholeheartedly, um, you know, to do something like that for sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, um, right now I see nobody else has their hands up. So I was somewhere, nobody else wants to participate in the public hearing at this point, so. With that in mind, I'm now closing the public hearing. And we'll go to deliberation by the planning commission, but before we do, I just want to make one statement, just there are so many people here involved with this and interested. I'd just like to let you all know that the city is in the process of reviewing this short-term rental ordinance. And, um, it, it'll, there will be a, a possibility for public. Input to help shape the future of this ordinance, so. I would urge everybody who's interested to keep paying attention and, and participate when, when the next opportunity comes. We had a meeting last fall and it was sadly, it was sparsely attended by residents and only mostly attended by. Want-to-be short-term rental people, so. Um, we'd like to get a much more balanced. Understanding of, of, of where we go with the ordinance, so just, that's just kind of a commercial I had to throw in there. So at that point now, we are at the table and we're deliberating and. Um, if someone wants to start talking, just raise their hand and we can, that way we won't step on each other. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first.
Oh, okay, Carrie?
Sorry, I'm switching screens. So. As the newbie on the commission. And all my learned colleagues can school me. Um, I had some discussion with this, um, with Alan this today because I wanted to try to get educated, but. My, my thoughts are, when we look at the minor conditional use permits. Um, for the criteria, minor conditional use permits shall only be permitted if the planning commission determines the following criteria are met. With respect to the type of use surrounding neighborhood, the value and qualities of the neighborhood surrounding the conditional use are not substantially injured. And my thought is that if you add essentially what is going to become. A motel for eight weeks of the summer into a residential neighborhood. Then the argument could be made that that is substantially injuring it. Um, the other one being 1B. The proposed use is compatible in function and design with the surrounding land uses. Since the surrounding land uses are single-family residences. I'm not a supporter of the motel, essentially eight weeks of the year. Being in the middle of the single-family residences. And then, just on number two intent of the zoning code. The conditional use is consistent with the intent and purpose of zoning code to promote public health, safety and general welfare. I would argue that that, having the eight weeks of the year. A motel in the middle of a neighborhood does not support that. That was my thoughts.
Okay. Tip?
Yeah, I guess that, um, just to quickly, uh, um, pursue this line, uh, that you're, that you were initiating, Carrie. To my mind, a lot of those considerations were the basis of the discussion to make the code. So that, for example, at that time, there were many, there were some voices that said that there were. Um, just by definition, certain neighborhoods that were not, that, that would not be appropriate for this kind of use. And there was a feeling by some that it, that these kinds of, um, of, uh, of, um. BY, what do they call it, like, you know, uh?
BRBO?
Yeah, BRBOs, that they should just be restricted to the downtown or maybe neighborhoods by the town-town. And so there was a very well-considered discussion at that time saying that. Uh, and this emerges, the more consensus view was that it would be better to limit the density. Uh, uh, not the, the density and also the number for the whole community. And that they would be spread out everywhere and there was recognition that that would, that meant that there would be a couple in Crystal Hills or in, you know, whatever neighborhood. Um, because when I guess, I suppose one could make the, the case that almost no neighborhood would want any of them. And if we did it on the basis of, of neighborhood opposition, I know my neighborhood would come out and say that they didn't like it either. And so the part of that discussion was if you have one in the neighborhood or within 500 feet. So I guess that what I'm trying to, what I'm suggesting is that some of those kinds of issues that you're talking about, I think are already built into the code itself. Um, because that, that, that code was a result of the, a feeling that every neighborhood was going to be appropriate. Although there could be some kind of other considerations that might mean that it, it wouldn't work in a particular place, but. Um, anyway, I think that, you know, I'll just.
Thanks, Tip.
Okay, Mike?
I agree with everything that Tip just said. But when we, when we wrote this ordinance way back when. There, it, it is basically a checklist and that the comments by the Pruitt's and Steve Fesold are, are spot-on. If it's a checklist, then why are we here? There, there is, um, when we wrote the code, there, there is. It's, it's not just a checklist. There, we have to go through this process. And I think that there are places in Mattoo that are perfect for. Um, vacation rentals and there's places even in Crystal Hills that are more appropriate. And there are some places that are not. And if there was ever a, and so when we, we, we wrote the code. To cover the whole city, but now we got, it's a conditional use, so. Our job is to look at these on a case-by-case individual basis. And see if it's appropriate and if it's detrimental to the neighborhood. And I, I just, uh, I'm not comfortable with this for a variety of reasons. Um, the eight weeks thing is, is really odd. We, we, you know, we've heard a lot of these in our travels. Um, that's just an unusual request. And it, it's just, it's just, um, I know that all these things are hard to police, I get it, but. You know, in an eight-week period that's not even defined and hard to enforce is, is a strange request. I understand the request, but it's just, it's just unusual. I'm also not comfortable with a twenty-year-old family member who's in college. Um, being responsible for this property, that's, that's a, that's kind of a, a tough one for a child or young adult. Um, removing five cars to allow, um, guests. You know, if, when I go on vacation, um, my wife and I, we usually take an Uber and leave our cars. Um, I don't know how anybody would take five cars and, um, what, what, what happens if they take their daughter with them on vacation? You know, and, but. All that being said, if there's any place in Mattoo that really should not have a vacation rental, it's Palisade Circle. I mean, that, that, that's just a quaint little quiet street that, um. Is just not used to traffic and it's not used to strangers. And it's, it's, I just think it's an awful location. And I, um. I think Todd made a comment about, um, the numbers that, of people that have commented, that's not, that's not. That doesn't, that's not swaying my commerce, my, my comments. One person can be opposed. It's, it's impressive and it's grateful that. A lot of people come out and, and enjoy this conversation. But, um, it's just, Palisade Circle is different. It's not your typical street. It's not typical in Crystal Hills. Um, you know, this, this comment from Sierra Tanner. Says, it's harder for me to play in my circle without being scared with so many strangers coming around. I mean, that, that's from a child. You know, I, I, and she's right. I, 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 I'm not comfortable with this and. I'm, I'm just not in favor.
David?
Um, I re- remember when some of those questions were raised about the marijuana businesses at the bottom of the hill. Those are issues which I don't think the planning commission is empowered to address. Um, now perhaps we could suggest, whether it's the police department or some other aspect of the city, but. Uh, Mike, I don't think it's, it's our job to, well, it's not our job, but also we don't have the power. To regulate the amount of traffic or visitors to Palisade Circle.
No, but if, if our job was just to verify a checklist, we'd be out of work. Um. This, this comment about the, the criteria, about the surrounding neighborhood, that the value and the qualities of neighborhood surrounding. Conditions are not substantially injured, I'm saying that they will be.
Anybody else like to comment on this? Well, we are at the table and. We need, somebody would like to make a motion, we could consider it. Mike, Carrie?
Sorry, I'm scrolling to get the.
I'm looking for the agenda.
Yeah, so am I.
Yeah, I apologize with, uh, without having a, um, printed agenda. I am technologically challenged enough, but. Uh, I'd like to move that we approve the, um, the minor, uh, conditional use permit in question.
Two thousand and one.
Two thousand and one, thank you, Casey.
And.
Carrie?
Any conditions or findings or staff conditions or findings or what are any?
With, with the conditions as outlined by, uh, the planning department and agreed to by Mr. Nagel.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Tip, you're, you're muted.
Do you have to have a second before we discuss it?
No.
Oh, so I would be curious, um, one thing that came up was about the drug use. And so whether you would want to have, David Armstrong, would you want to include that there would not be drug use?
Good point.
That, and then it also came up of the, like, one of the things that because of the discussion by the neighbors. Um, applicant had, uh, had offered to have a three-night minimum, so that was something that came out of this interaction. Do you want to go along with a three-night minimum also?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was in Michelle's recommendations. You're, I get your point, yes. With those two changes, that there be a three-night minimum and that no drug use would be allowed. Obviously to the degree that Mr. Nagel can control that. Thank you, Tip.
I, I don't think we need to, to mention the drugs. We, that's never been done before and to say that. We are not allowing illegal use is kind of redundant.
Okay.
But what about, what about the property manager, manager? Are you comfortable with that?
I am, but let, you know, I think you're not, so, um, propose a, a change.
Well, it's not my job and I, I, I think we can put that back on the applicant to get. Uh, somebody that's more comfortable with.
I, I, I'm comfortable with the, the twenty-year-old daughter.
Okay, Tip?
I guess in this one, um, maybe at this, in this one, David, uh, we would part company. I guess that I have reservation. I do have reservations about that. We've been, in the past, we've been pretty stringent, I think, and rightly so about. Ha- having a lot of clarity in terms of how the property was going to be managed, should there be a problem? So I do think that that's, that, that is an issue that concerns me and I also, um, am concerned about the five cars that are on the property, especially since we went. You know, the, uh, planning staff and went through the machinations of showing how, you know, basically this, the property can support four cars. And that they're already over that and five, which means that anybody else who came would be. You know, we can say you don't park on the street, but then they're going to park on the street because, or some, you know, there are already five cars. And as you were saying, Mike, Casey, that if in the summer there are four, let's say they drive away with one car and there are four cars there and then four more cars show up. That's, that to me is a, is a burden on the property, uh, and that does go to, um, the, we are supposed to be taking consideration the parking situation. So that also raises, um, red flags for me. So those two issues. In my mind, I think probably, I think, in my opinion, should be addressed.
Yeah, um, yeah, my, uh, my opinion on parking and cars is we should. Not just this conditional use, but any minor conditional use. Part of the, part of the conditions should be that all household vehicles. Must not be parked on the right-of-way. As part of the conditional use, that has to be part of it. And, and this is taking, this is exchanging the use. I, I mean, right now, you know, they could park all five cars on the right-of-way. And there's no, nothing in our city ordinance that says they can't. But I feel like if we're allowing someone to have a conditional use for this kind of business. That one of the conditions should be that all vehicles must be parked on the property at all times, even when there are no guests. And, and, you know, I see this in my neighborhood with the short-term rentals where. We jump through hoops to make them modify their, their parking configuration to cover the parking and. Now, turns out they have three or four cars and so. Besides the guest parking, they have two cars on the street at all times and I, and so I think in the future. That should just be part of our thought process. You get this conditional use, besides parking your guest parking on your property, you park all your vehicles. And period, end of story. So that's my opinion on that. Uh, David?
Yeah, well, I think, uh, it's obvious, uh, that I need to, to defer to my more experienced colleagues. And withdraw my motion, uh, and let someone else formulate one that meets all the conditions that, that concern you. Um, and in doing that, I just want to say thank you, Michelle, uh, week after week. With a great deal of time, uh, Christine gave her report last night and explained about how much time it takes to do one of these. Um, and particularly when you have an entire neighborhood practically upset about it. Um, I admire you for hanging in there and I think coming up, uh, week by week, uh, uh. Application by application with a very thorough, comprehensive, uh, set of recommendations and I appreciate that.
Thanks, David. Um, Commissioner, Chairman Delwich, could I just maybe offer some amendments to the conditions that might address at least some of this? Um, for, and that might help somebody make a motion?
Um, can I, can I try first, please?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'd like to make a motion to deny, um, minor conditional use to two thousand and one.
Would you like to have some, I, I think if you do that, it would be nice to have some rationale for your.
I, I, I'm sorry, I thought I said it. I think that, um, Palisade Circle is, is not a good place for a vacation rental. As I stated in detail before. Um, the vagueness of this eight weeks is, is strange. The neighbors won't know when it starts, won't know when it ends. I'm not comfortable with a twenty-year-old, um, family member as a property manager.
Okay, so those are going to be your rationale. That's fine. I, I just wanted to get that on the record. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Anybody like to speak to this? Tip?
May I ask a question, please, Chairman?
Yeah.
My signal froze there for a second. I just want to make sure that I, I apologize, you guys. I, I caught, the only part that I caught on Commissioner Casey's objection was, I'm sorry, Mike, could you redo that?
Sure, sure. I just, I don't want to go into detail on Palisades Circle. I did that already, but I just think it's not a great location. It's detrimental to the surrounding neighbors. Not comfortable with the vagueness of the eight weeks. We don't know when it starts. We don't know when it ends. The neighbors won't. I'm uncomfortable with the 20-year-old property manager. I mean, the, the five-car situation is equally as bizarre, but that's, that's, that's kind of getting a little petty. But mostly it's, it's detrimental to the neighborhood. It just doesn't belong in Palisades Circle.
I, I appreciate that clarification and I apologize, everyone, for my technical mishaps.
Okay. No, Tip, you had had your hand up first.
I had a question for Michelle. So if this were to be denied, would the applicant then have the right to try to address the conversation that has taken place here and reapply trying to, you know, with us, with a, an application that might take into consideration some of these objections?
Certainly. I mean, the applicant could amend the application and then reapply. He could also appeal to city council. You know, if, if you're thinking that he might want to amend the application, you may want to ask him about that. Because it will require, you know, payment of new fees and all that kind of stuff. But that would be up to the commission.
David, you had your hand up, did you?
Yeah, with all respect, Mike, I think we open ourselves to some significant liability. Initially, I would say that at 20 years old, you are allowed to vote and you're allowed to risk your life for your country and the military. This, the strangeness of the eight, eight weeks, I don't know how that would play out in a lawsuit, but I think it's probably not very convincing. But my main concern is if we take the attitude that Palisades Circle is a special case and we're going to apply the code differently to it, then I think we open ourselves to a serious and indefensible liability.
Well, we're not, we're not applying the code differently. We're, we're interpreting what it says, that the value and the qualities of the neighborhood surrounding the conditional use are not substantially injured. I'm saying on Palisades Circle, which is unique, that they will be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Carrie?
And I would also follow that up with the proposed use incompatible and function design with the surrounding land use in support of rejecting it.
Okay, so we have a motion. No second at this point.
No, I think-
Carrie?
Storm seconded it.
Oh, she did. You did, Carrie? Okay, sorry.
And, and David, just to be clear, I'm not, it's not the, the age. I think it's more the family member that I'm concerned with, whom, like I said, may or may not go on vacation with the rest of the family or is in college and is super busy. You know, it's just, it's, it's, well, maybe it is, maybe it is the age. I don't know. But it's just, it's just not, it's just not comfortable compared to all the other applicants that have had either professional property managers or, or people that are, that are available at 3:00 in the morning if there's emergency. That's, that's all.
I hear you.
Okay.
And so I think that at this point, I'll be voting against the motion. I, I do think that this is an issue I would like to have addressed about the property management. But I don't think that we're, the motion does not afford the applicant the possibility to address that. And if we were going to, so to me, that, that ends up being a more definitive rejection. If we were going to say that we were going to postpone it or something like that, then I could imagine that. But when I look at the ensemble, yeah, then I'm going to, for the, for the reasons we've already stated, then I'm going to have to, I think it's a tough case, but I'll have to against the, the motion.
Okay. Would anybody else like to, any other comments?
Where's Julie Wolf when we need her?
Okay, well, so we have a motion and a second. And if there's no more discussion, let's vote on this. And we can do that by raising our hands. So all those in favor, raise your hand. And all those opposed? Okay, so that motion fails. So and I have to say that I wish I could have voted for it, but I just, I have to agree that we're, you know, I'd rather, a better process I'd like is to either postpone or, or ask the applicant if they'd like to consider some other things, or if someone else wants to make a motion. And if it carries, then if there's discontent or disagreement, the neighborhood can appeal to council. Tip?
So Chairman, would I be in my rights to make a motion to postpone consideration so that the applicant could address the issues of parking, of the property management plan? At least those two things?
I think that's certainly within the realm of what we can do. The other thing we could do, number one, we could change the, add a condition that there must be a professional property manager. That would take care of that. And we could also add a condition that there needs to be specific, specifically defined weeks of when the eight weeks would start and end. You know, there are other ways to do it without postponing. I'm concerned about, you know, you know, just having, you know, a two-hour hearing every month. And I'm right, you know, I'm not sure that it's necessary if we can, if someone wants to make a motion like that. Let's see, I think David was up first. David?
Michelle, I thought you had a specific date, frame, timeframe for the eight weeks. Maybe I missed that.
Well, the condition states basically the three summer months. So it does not state, you know, July 1st to August 31st. It's, it-
Eight weeks within that period?
Within that timeframe, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, Carrie?
Since, since the applicant mentioned that it was based on his wife's school holiday time, you could potentially just tie it to the school holiday time of whatever school she's teaching at.
Yep. So how about this? Could I make a motion? And in that motion, say that, an amendment that it has to be three-night minimum, that the date, I'm thinking about Carrie Storm's comment about teaching, that the, that the eight weeks would be stipulated as June 15th till August 15th. And that there be a professional management company that would take care of the property in the owner's absence.
Sure, you can make that motion. And if you added a thing about parking, I might even support it.
And so so how would I, so to the chair, how would I phrase? I'm very sympathetic with what you're saying. What would that conditions sound like?
I would say throughout the year, all household vehicles must be parked on the property and not on the right-of-way.
So I'll take that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Carrie?
Can I just ask a question on the enforceability of that? I, I do, I just think about, you know, we can put it in there. But again, unless you're monitoring it like the eight weeks, how, how is that going to be?
It's, it's just like any other condition or any other situation, it would be up to the neighborhood to enforce it. And if, believe me, if I could get, if I could get someone to listen, I would have, have that enforcement done on the condition, on the short-term rental in my neighborhood that has cars all over the place. But we didn't have the foresight or the understanding to know about this kind of way to game the system, basically. So that's, you know, the last time we did a conditional use, I think I insisted on that similar type of language. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Could I just add a couple of small points? Or propose a couple of small points? I do think it is important to the neighbors to mention the drug use. Now, I don't think you necessarily have to mention illegal drugs because like Mike said, that, that can go without saying. But I, we, and we have in the past noted that there would be no marijuana use allowed, marijuana use of any kind allowed on the premises. And the applicant said he was fine with that. So I would suggest that you think about adding that. And then I think you covered, yeah, that, that was the only thing that came up in the conversation.
In my, in my motion, I would like to add that language.
Okay, and you did add the language about having a professional manager. Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, is there any more discussion? Then let's, Carrie?
Do we need to confirm with the applicant that the, that the modifications are acceptable before we vote?
No, no. We're, we've heard from the applicant and we're making conditions and a conditional use for them.
Okay.
So if there's no discussion, then let's vote. By raising, all those in favor, raise their hand. Okay, that's five. And all those opposed? And we have one opposite, one opposed. Okay. So as I said before, to the audience, if, if you're still uncomfortable with it and you, you want to appeal it, you can talk to Michelle offline and she can explain to you how to file an appeal. And it would be appealed to city council and they will- Okay. So let's see, let me find the next item. Okay. Now we'll move on to new business. The next item is subdivision waiver 2002, encroachment into no-build area 317 Oak Place, Doug Pretzer applicant.
Okay, sorry about that.
I'm going to bow out now, and as Justin returns.
Okay.
And for the first time, you didn't get 100% consensus, in my view, Alan. You're still a genius, but I'm glad to know that that is a possibility and we can survive it.
Go back and look at the minutes of the old meetings and you'll find lots of needed. One, four to one, five to one.
Thank you, everyone, and particularly you, Mike.
Okay.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready?
Yes, yes. I called up the subdivision waiver 2002.
Thank you. So the applicant is requesting a subdivision waiver to allow a portion of the proposed new home into the no-build area defined on the plat of this property. You all have a significant amount of information enclosed or incorporated into the staff report. The subject property was platted in 2010. It's over 78,000 square feet in size. It's proposed for single-unit development. It's accessed by a private road easement serving four properties in this area at the end of Oak Place. The applicant planned for construction of his new home and utilized the front property line, which is the center line of the access easement to calculate the setback. However, the planning department has established a practice of calculating the setback from the edge of a private road access or access, much like the setback is from a public road from the edge of that right-of-way and not the center. So this easement also serves utilities and drainage, and those are also reasons for not taking the setback from the middle of the, of the easement. So once the applicant became aware of the setback issue, he moved the proposed house to meet the, the zone requirement of 25 feet. And this pushed it into the no-build area. A full geologic hazards report by INTECH Engineering was completed for this lot and the adjacent vacant lot at the time of plating in 2010. The applicant obtained a letter from GeoQuest Engineering dated February 2020, which reviewed that INTECH report, the site conditions, and specific location of the proposed development on the lot and results of the soil borings performed for INTECH. That recent evaluation confirmed that INTECH's report is still valid and that the proposal is acceptable in regard to land stability and suitability. The letter specifically states the requested location is less susceptible to downslope creep than an area, area higher up on the property. So according to the city subdivision regulations, the planning commission can consider waivers to, from the regulations for three types of requests. And this request is under type three, which is regarding encroachment in the 30, 30% or steeper slopes. The code further states waivers will only be approved in cases where unique or exceptional site conditions make strict compliance with the subdivision, subdivision standards, otherwise impractical or where a waiver would result in a greater benefit to the surrounding area or the community at large. Waivers can be approved conditionally. However, cannot be granted if it would be detrimental to the public good or result in adverse conditions or inadequate mitigation of such conditions on the site or surrounding properties or would otherwise impair the intent and purpose of the subdivision regulations. So under the proposal, approximately 340 square feet of the home's total footprint of 2,179 square feet would be within the no-build area. However, the total disturbance in the no-build will be approximately 2,300 square feet due to the retaining wall behind the home. INTECH's evaluation indicates that retaining wall is important to control drainage and erosion at the back of the house.
Oh, sorry to interrupt for just a second. You noticed Kathy Klepper is here. And I wasn't sure if she wanted to be added to the-
Yeah, you do have one available slot.
Kathy, are you still interested? Are you here?
She raises her hand and Christine could move her over.
Okay. Oh, she has her hand raised, okay. Okay, Kathy, you're with us now. Can you hear? You're muted.
Kathy, go ahead and unmute.
I'm unmuted.
Hi.
Hi there.
Did you hear me start the report?
I did. I've been on the whole, almost the whole time. Yep.
Okay, all right, great. I just, you can't root, you can't sit on it unless you've heard me go through it. So, great. All right, so as I said, INTECH's evaluation indicates the retaining wall is important to control drainage and erosion at the back of the house. Senior Planner Karen Birchall provided an evaluation of the request under Plan Manitou and found the issue of geo-hazards and slope stability is the primary concern and recommended the applicant address those issues in order to obtain approval. Staff finds the issues have been addressed and the INTECH letter provides the required statement that the proposal will not create, and I'm sorry, that's not the INTECH letter, that's the GeoQuest letter, will not create a significant geologic risk to this property or adjacent properties and no further study is required. So the buildable area on the site is restricted once the setback is applied as we prescribe. At approximately 3,400 square feet of liv- At approximately 3,400 square feet of living area, the proposed house is not of an uncommon size, especially for a lot that's just under two acres. And a modest area of the actual house actually encroaches into the no-build. Staff notes that similar conditions exist on the other vacant lot south of the property and staff is working with those owners regarding whether they'll request a variance, a waiver or a combination of those applications. There don't appear to be any better areas or other potential building sites on the property on which a home could be placed that would not trigger either a variance or a waiver. And any attempt to place construction higher on the property would impact the slopes to a greater degree. Alternatively, the applicant could have proposed a front setback variance or a combination of variance in a waiver. However, he felt placed in the house close to the access road and the utilities and drainage in that road that do run along in front of this property was not the best, best scenario for either his home or frankly for those, for those installations. The property has been posted as required by the subdivision regs and the subdivision waiver was advertised in the local paper. Written notification of surrounding property owners was done by the applicant. Staff received two inquiries and actually did get an email from Chuck Smith that, who lives kind of over the hill east of this property, stating that he did not see any reason to not, to have objections to it. He didn't object to it. He felt it was a reasonable request. The applicant obtained a wildfire mitigation evaluation from our fire department and that will be referenced in the permitting for the new home. There were no issues found regarding that. No comments have been received from reviewing agencies. A new fire hydrant is being installed across the street from this property. The applicant has applied for water and sewer taps for the new home. A city stormwater and erosion control plan is required as part of the proposed building permitting and the area is served by both Manitou Springs and Colorado Springs utilities. There was an email sent earlier today regarding some potential grading on the property and there was some misunderstanding about a broken water line. I emailed the applicant and I confirmed that he did some very minimal vegetation clearance under our grading permit requirement so that the rig could get in to do the soil's borings. But that, and, and he had put up erosion fence, but it appears there's some issues with the contractor doing the fire hydrant installation and he felt like the, that contractor has maybe pushed some things over onto his property and the fence doesn't appear to be there. But the other issue was is they discovered an old box that was kind of a metal box that was buried on the property that has always been full of water and evidently discovered that there's an old water line that comes from Spur Road across his property that no one knew about. And so he did not break that line, but they are trying to figure out basically how to get rid of it and it's leaking. So I think somebody thought that it was broken. So he's working with public services on that. And it doesn't appear to serve anybody else because they were trying to figure out how to shut it off. I don't even know if it has a shut off at this point, but anyway, that's the update as, in regard to, to that, to those issues. So it appears to staff that approval of the subdivision waiver will allow construction of a new home that will be cited similarly to houses along a public street and will not create a hazardous or unstable condition on this property or adjacent properties. The encroachment by the home itself is, is minimal and the house is of a typical size for the area and in relation to the overall size of the lot. The majority of the encroachment area is associated with a retaining wall and drainage provisions at the rear of the home, which are cited in the geo-hazards letter as important factors for construction on this property. The geo-hazards report indicates the house can be constructed in the proposed location without creating a hazard on this property or just to surrounding properties. Staff finds there are no other feasible locations to construct a new home on the lot that would not generate more ground disturbance or trigger other variances. Therefore, based on the criteria for approval of subdivision waiver, of a subdivision waiver set forth in the subdivision code, staff recommends granting SW 202 to Lot 3 Dylan subdivision filing number two to allow for encroachment into the identified no-build as shown on the site plan dated February 18th, 2020, which you have in your packet with the following finding. The subdivision waiver is justified based on information provided in the application and in regard to conditions peculiar to this site. The application establishes that there are no other locate, there's no other location on the property where development would be relocated that would not create more disturbance or not require other variances from the city's regulations and granting of the waiver under the conditions imposed will not be detrimental to the public good, will not destabilize or create geologic hazards on this or adjacent property and will not impair the intent and purpose of the subdivision regulations. Additionally, the following conditions of approval are recommended for subdivision waiver 2002. Number one, approval is contingent upon the development of the property following the recommendations in the geologic hazards report by INTECH Engineering dated July 21st, 2010, and the letter by GeoQuest Engineering dated February 11th, 2020, regarding the foundation size, design, mitigation measures and construction monitoring. The GeoQuest letter confirms there are no geo-hazards anticipated, which cannot be reasonably, reasonably mitigated and does not recommend further study of the property. And two, the subdivision waiver is good for one year from the date of approval unless the building permit for construction of the subject, on the subject property is obtained and remains valid through completion of the construction of the new home. And that's the staff report. I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions for staff? Mike?
Sorry, I'm on a roll.
Bubble maker.
Michelle, just to be clear, does the GeoQuest letter satisfy Karen Birchall?
Yeah, I mean, they reviewed the full report that was done in 2010 and there were really only two reasons why we required that, that Mr. Pretzer get a letter from, from whoever and from GeoQuest is we generally won't accept reports over a couple of years old. There's liability issues and, you know, if people are still around and all that kind of stuff. But then also, at the time that that was done, the specific home site wasn't picked. So they really needed to look at that specific home site. And they, you know, they did kind of use the magic words about, you know, there's no further mitigation, there's no better place for it and that it can be put in that location without causing disturbance. So they basically endorsed the required, the, the proposal. So yeah, it, it, it is sufficient to address Karen's issues.
And then on the mailing, it, do you know how many people were contacted?
Off the top of my head, I do not know how many.
Okay, don't worry about it, just curious.
I know we checked it, but I don't remember how many were, were included.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, so now we're at the public hearings. Oh, actually, no, now we have the applicant.
Yeah, I think Mr. Pretzer is here, or he's logged in, let's put it that way.
Okay. Bring him up somehow. Where is he? Oh, there he is. Okay. Okay, Mr. Pretzer, would you like to unmute your mic?
Okay. This is Jay Pretzer. My son Doug is the applicant. You can find him on the list of applicants.
Okay, there he is. He's got his hand, okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, okay. Are you comfortable with staff findings and recommendations?
Yeah, I appreciate everything Michelle has laid out and she summarized it perfectly.
Okay, do you have anything you'd like to add or any?
Um, yeah, well, then I just wanted to make sure, as pointed out, is the necessity of the request ultimately was the planning department's policy on how that front setback is measured. Something that was not known to me when I bought the property or was designing the house to lay on there. So that's why it had to be pushed back into the no-build is because of that policy that the city has.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Would anybody like to, have any questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks. If we have any questions, we'll bring you back. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the public hearing is open now. Would anybody like to speak? We have Glenn Bosley Mitchell. Put their hands up. Okay. Yep, okay.
I'm Glenn Bosley Mitchell. I live at 318 Oak Place, which is right across the drive from this property. I have no opposition to this. I support it. I think actually pushing it back makes it a better use of the property. I have no qualms there. Just a side note, the fire hydrant has become quite a mess. We did lose our water for several days involved in that and that construction project is quite a mess, so I'm sure the city's all aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mitchell? Okay, thank you. Would anybody else in the audience like to address this item? Okay, then the public hearing is closed. And we're ready for discussion or motions or whatever.
No brainer.
Are you making a motion?
I don't know. I've, I've, I did my motions for today.
Oh, come on, Mike.
I don't know. Honestly, I, I, I don't even have, my agenda is buried in a pile of papers, so. Go ahead, Tip.
So I'll move approval of I'm looking through the agenda for approval of SW 2002 with all of findings and recommendations.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Julia seconded. Any discussion?
Was that Julie or Kathy?
It was Kathy.
So go ahead.
We probably both did at the same time.
I just wanted to add that I was very glad to hear that Glenn Bosley Mitchell supports this. I was curious on that little aspect and it's, I'm glad that he took the time to contribute to this meeting and that he supports the project.
Okay. Any more discussion? Then let's vote. All those in favor, raise their hand. Okay, opposed, no, so that was unanimous. And what happened to Justin? He fell off. Yeah, oh, he's, he was.
Now he came on and
Yeah.
Oh, he disappeared. Oh, there he is.
There he's back. He got moved over inadvertently.
Justin, did you hear the full report and everything?
Yeah, I did. I just left like 30 seconds ago. It went blank.
Okay.
Okay. Yes on that?
Yes.
Okay, so that was unanimous, seven zero.
Great.
Hey, great. So now we move on to our next item if I, oh, it's, oh, fall down here. Trouble with this. You have your agenda on the iPad. Okay, next item is memorandum and ordinance revising enforcement and conditional use permits, review and recommendation to city council.
I'm looking for it. I'm sorry. I also have a pile of papers going and.
You have real papers. Wow.
I do. I did go into the office because I'm old and send in my ways. I went into the office and made myself some hard copies. But I'm not sure. Oh, here it is. So I had given you all a very minimal memo about what this is and it basically boils down to, we asked the city attorney about some, a potential enforcement action that involved a conditional use permit. And he looked at the code and basically said, hmm, it's not real clear in the current code that it's actually a violation of the zoning code if you violate your conditional use permit and how, you know, that should relate to enforcement action. Now, he said, you know, we could still do enforcement action, but if somebody wanted to, you know, object to that or, or fight it, it could become an issue. And so he drafted a pretty short code amendment that goes in the conditional use section that basically kind of closes that loop and specifies that violations of any conditions in a conditional use permit shall be subject to enforcement as violations of the code and shall be subject to the penalties set forth in 1.01.100, which is our standard penalty section in the code. So it kind of just closes that loop, clarifies it and make sure that we don't end up you know, in a, in a situation where somebody challenges our ability to enforce a condition, which I think you all have, you know, some of the discussion tonight relates to, to some of that. So anyway, that's the proposal and since it is an amendment to the zoning code, planning commission by, by code has to review any amendments to the zoning code, zoning or subdivision, I think. And so that's, we are bringing it before you, before it goes on to city council and hopefully you all agree and recommend council approve it.
Okay, thoughts by the commission?
So we're just, we're talking about that one, sorry. We're talking about that one sentence, right?
That's basically the only thing that gets added to the zoning code, yes. We have to have a whole page of verbiage to do that, but.
And two, in one public hearing at the commission and two public hearings at city council.
Right.
Okay, well, it sounds good to me. Any more discussion? So, so all those in favor, do we need a motion? I guess.
Yeah, you should, so that we have a formal motion that we can report to council.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I will. I'll make, let me flip over to that screen, hold on. Motion to approve of ordinance amending section 18 30.070 of the Manitou Springs Municipal Code concerning conditional use violations.
In a second.
I'll second.
Is that Justin?
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion? And all those in favor? It looks like that's unanimous, so. No opposed, and that carries and I guess without having to scroll eight, 90 pages up, I think that's the last item on our agenda.
That is, that's the last item on the agenda.
Okay.
Ask one question of Dylan.
Or two, if you want.
No, just what, well, Dylan, you, you know, we got the, the notice from you today about coming to this meeting. There was some, another notice about meeting online from here all the way December. Are you still going to be sending a notice on the day of the thing? Like, do I have to keep that email for eight months? That's what I'm thinking.
No, it would be a new, a new link.
We'll send, even if it ends up being, I, I, yeah, a, a new link or the same, we'll send it out every time so you guys don't have to go and try to search for an email.
Right on, because I'll lose it also.
And a link gets posted to the planning commission webpage too, if it's just easier for you to go to that.
Oh, I like getting it from you, Dylan, on the day of.
Should happen and, you know, you get it, but it won't work. You know, you can just scoot over to the city webpage and, and, you know, get it off of the agenda. Thanks, guys. I really appreciate it all and sorry, I'm getting a big cold sore, so I was having troubles talking there, especially at the end, so. Anyway.
Can I just add one comment, please, on the short-term rentals? The, I know there's a way on the Manitou The I know there's a way on the Manitou site to complain or or complain, I guess. But we never talked about that, and I think that would be a good thing to publicize.
Sure.
Good point. I agree.
In fact, I would rather encourage that than the chat because actually you had raised the chat, Alan, earlier. I never look at chat. Now that I'm doing Zoom all the time, I can't do two things. I don't look at it, but sometimes the things are flashing down, and it's almost as if they're imposing in a way that they could not in a regular meeting. So I think it's actually it is inappropriate, and some of the things that are they saying, I mean, I don't care if I'm insulted or we're insulted. Who cares about that? That doesn't come into judgment, but I think that it's better. It would be better if we could pursue not having the chat. But as Mike is saying, create a really good open forum for people to comment on. I think that's a great idea.
Sure. We'll work on it.
Yeah, it was annoying. I'll stop looking at it because it was.
See, on I I don't see it. I don't know if it I have to actually physically click on it for it to come up on the side of my screen.
I was thinking you weren't getting the rolling notices.
No, so if you click on chat again, it just goes away. You don't see any of it.
Yeah.
Let's give it up.
Yeah, on my laptop.
I actually, it might work differently. I on for me, I I got rid of it, so I wasn't seeing everything, but sometimes at the bottom of the screen, the first like five words would come up would flash up. It wasn't getting the whole chat. It was just like the teaser.
Yeah, I was getting distracted and losing my chain of thought when I I would see that. So.
Yeah.
So we're all learning about how to make this work better, and, you know, it's the kind of thing that who knows how long or and not just necessarily associated with the pandemic. This is the kind of thing that I think a lot of places over the over time are going to go to, and I think this whole situation just pushed that forward. But when you look at the ease of, you know, not having to travel somewhere, the extra time, all that kind of stuff. You know, gosh, I was able to sit in my living room and and do this and didn't have all that extra back and forth with the.
Well, think about snow days. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's great. Like, I think a lot of businesses are going to stop doing the business travel. If you have a three hour meeting in Chicago.
Great.
Why fly there?
Exactly.
Yeah.
I have I have a question. Before you guys move me into the other section, I couldn't see any of the people in the audience. So is that, should I have been able to see that?
No, no, we couldn't either.
Okay, so I would say the only comment back to Michelle would be, I do think the participants, you maybe isn't as strong if you're only hearing them and you're not seeing. I mean, that would be something to think about as you're looking at using this beyond the pandemic.
Well, when they're pulled over into the panel section, I think they do have the video option and.
Yeah, if they choose.
Because I didn't see anybody for the short term rentals, and I was, you know, in a different area, and I couldn't see who was speaking.
Yeah, we could hear them, but we couldn't see most of them. They didn't have their video on.
Right. There were a number of people who just called in, and so some of those, we don't have video option for them. It would just be speaking, right?
This is a great tool. It's a great way to keep in touch with people that are in live in some other community.
Yep.
I do this all the time.
Yeah, me too.
You guys are old hats at it. Well, maybe you can show us some.
I'm this now.
Well, it's great. You if you have, you know, I I have a niece, and we often watch the same TV show, and I can share my screen, and so we'll watch five episodes of some ridiculous.
Oh, that's awesome.
And it's just almost like you're you're in the same place.
Thank you, Ted.
I think I'm gonna go eat now, so.
We'll see you guys. Actually, I think that's a good idea. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.